Calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Here.
Patenya?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Nolteri?
Here.
Rovell?
Here.
Stullbert?
Here.
And Mayor Donham?
Here. Hurdle Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and liberty in its heart.
Sunshine Law?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, the notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22nd, 2022 edition of the Louisville Times and Star-Led. The Sunshine Law was complied with by adapting and forwarding to the press, posting it forward with Mr. Curry, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the township website and also on the bulletin board.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, everybody, welcome you to the first meeting in October. First meetings mean they are our council work session slash discussion meeting. So any member of the governing body or administration can put any topics they want on for discussion and/or for updates. And you're here basically to hear us have a conversation about that, either in amongst ourselves or between our professionals and/or invited guests. So this is the first meeting of October. Therefore, you do have some council discussion items here. Seems that I have four items on. That's actually it. So if you do hear something that interests you, while there is no public commenting during this particular portion of the meeting, you most certainly can ask a question or make a comment during the public commenting session to come later. So with that being said, I had the first thing I had on here was a stadium bleacher update from the manager. So, and then we painted the bleachers. I think we're still getting ready to tweak some things.
I think it's getting maybe some further direction, but I think if I'm not mistaken, we probably want to hire an engineer to go up and come up back with a proposal to make those bleachers ADA accessible. I think that's probably one of the biggest concerns that was brought out to our attention. Everybody gave us compliments on the new look. For us to do the exterior of the paint, it would require scaffolding, so I don't know if we're ready for that. We may want to, we may want to outsource that. But I think the bleachers themselves, as far as, they are in need of certainly repair, but it may require us going out and hiring an engineer because the type of work that's required to make the, for better work, where to make the lanes a little wider, may require that. And I think, is that the direction I'm getting from your counsel?
So that was my, I did want to ask for an update on ADA accessibility. So what I've been told is you can enter through Milton. If you were with somebody in a wheelchair, let's just say, you can come in through Milton, come through the tunnel, let's just call it. And if you made, depending on which tunnel you came out of, their left or right, if we can carve out an area there, that would be the ideal spot. I have heard similar complaints from parents of children either immobilized or in a wheelchair, even those with canes, you know, seniors and stuff like that. So that would be one. And then I think really the stadium update that I was looking forward to see whether or not, what we're gonna, you mentioned the exterior, that's something that has to be discussed, but what about the interior? I mean, it's, there's no electricity at all in there.
And I think, Mayor, from what we talked about it a while ago, that underneath the stairs, they, we wanted to fix that electric and also cage it off to where the equipment and the investment that we put into all of the stuff that's outside in the wintertime, take it in and store it underneath at one place instead of having those sheds and all that other stuff.
Last I checked, I think we have maybe a million dollars accessible for that. And I know between myself and the deputy mayor and Councilman Graziano, with the work that we do on the redevelopment committee, there's definitely community benefit money floating around. We haven't allocated any of that yet. But there would be additional monies available. We just need to get our hands around what the project's gonna look like.
Right, and also I think there's one lurk outstanding, that's the fences coming sloughing Milton and coming in from the parking lot that we said, I know we had discussion on tightening them up, making them look nicer, presentable, and also safety. Because now we can lock them, but people slide right through and we have no, you know, we have no supervision up there when that happens, and yet we'll be sponsors.
Just to clarify, I think Tommy is talking about the lower section where we have to pave it and put the cages up. I think you're talking about the upper section where you can actually walk and have finished area. Two different ideas.
Oh, two different things here, but I know we had a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We toured it at one point.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, 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 that was it.
So yeah, we have to come up with some kind of scope of maybe what we're looking for and then have somebody bring in the cost and dial it in for us to make a decision on.
And how would the maintenance too? I haven't been, I don't think the maintenance.
There's nothing, there's nothing in that building. It's totally winterized, so the plumbing's out. The electric is out. It's really just a shell.
Do they still use it for the locker rooms?
They do use it for locker rooms. They use it for locker rooms, but that's not separate, but that's to the extent of it. There is, there's no lighting in the tunnels. We did get a price to pave the tunnel just to make things easier to get things in and out. But again, before I spend hypothetically $30,000 on paving inside the tent, putting asphalt in the, I want to make sure that we're going forward with that.
For storage area, right?
For storage.
We can't do that.
What, Blacktop? Bobby? We're not there. But, but.
I'm saying, I'm saying.
All right, so can we, if anybody has any thoughts or interest or particular features or functionality that they want to see, just let the manager know.
Yeah, so I got lighting, plumbing, and I'll throw that in.
Plumbing, ADA accessibility, exterior feasibility. And then we have to somehow get something to differentiate the colors of blue from the riser to the. I know you guys said we were looking at it. It's all the same color. So when you're walking up, because the riser and this part is the same color, if your eye, certain strain, you lose all kinds of depth perception. I emailed you, I hope you watched.
But there was always one color, so the person.
No, the, where you would put your back when you're sitting, the riser, Tom, the riser, the tom.
The riser, that's the riser, and the rest is the thread.
Right, so the riser and the threads wear different colors in certain parts. And you're talking basically reflectors on the steps then?
Well, we were exploring that, see how much it costs.
We have to break it up. It's, I've got emails from people that get dizzy because you lose depth perception.
Also serve as lighting in the evening too, so it's pretty cool.
He didn't come on that line, probably. Probably Nelson.
Is anybody on it? Ask them.
Yeah, someone is standing there, but they're talking, so they're talking to someone else.
All right, we're good? Any council member that's got something they want the manager to check off his list, give it to him. If not, we'll just start running down some different scenarios. Okay, next one, this is a carryover from, I guess, the last work session from Star-Led. Zoning certificates for CCOs.
Yeah, so this concern's been, you know, brought up to our attention, I guess maybe four or five weeks ago, maybe six weeks ago. Since then, there have been several discussions with zoning planning, town attorney. Mary Bucci, our planner, is now somewhat involved in addressing the concern. There is a meeting scheduled for one day, I believe it's next week. And I believe we have all the right people come into that meeting to resolve any conflict on the way the statute reads. I'm sorry, the code reads.
So I, yeah, this originated, like you said, a couple weeks ago, maybe the last work session. But there were two reasons why this came out. One, I know some members of this governing body on a committee were with you and the school district to talk about maybe re-registration, how we could assist that. And COs and zoning certificates were part of that conversation. And then there was also another conversation that goes back even many months before that, about how we had different fee ordinances and the fees were all over the place. And then you had asked every department to identify what their fees are and kind of point to you or the town attorney or somebody in the direction of where that fee exists in our ordinance book. And that, those two things then started a whole conversation about COs or usually certificate of occupancies, we should really say CCOs, continues to be given occupancy, usually permit a use and grant you the ability to use the building, however, and that usually.
That's the exact opposite.
I disagree with that.
Yeah, it's the exact opposite. Zonings, zoning permit.
Controls the use.
Controls the use, and the CCO controls the building and the safety issues and whether it's built correctly, the construction.
But the COs or CCOs usually have the zone on it.
I don't know about that, but that's not. So, so as a result of this whole discussion, we, and we have, we met a couple times. Frank was there, Anthony was there, even Vinnie may have been there. Kind of delved into the codebook a little bit. There is some glaring discrepancies, let's call them, in the codebook as to zone. First of all, it's not zoning certificates, they're zoning permits. Our code doesn't talk about a zoning certificate. It talks about zoning permits. And the state statute talks about zoning permits. Construction, CCOs or COs are separate and apart from zoning permits. They do have some relationship, but there's ones for building code, as we said, that's the CCO or the construction, or the CFO. And then there's the zoning permit, which has to do with use and change of use and that kind of thing. So I, it was my suggestion that we meet with Franken and Anthony and the, our planner, to try to work with and get the code up to speed, because it's not. There's some things in there that talks about zoning permits for things that the statute doesn't, so we're, that's gotta be taken care of. We have two sections in the code which talks about zoning permits, fees, one's $50, one's $100. So we have to resolve those issues. And that's, that's the, it's a good time to come up and we'll resolve it. We didn't, I didn't know it until this issue came up and now we've, we've found the issue and we'll deal with it.
So the issue that I haven't heard mentioned really by anybody, I know I asked the manager several times to point, to point in our ordinance book where it says zoning certificate or permit is required for a CO. I know you weren't, you didn't find that? So the issue that we have is that.
It wouldn't say that, okay? In fact, it can't say that, okay? Your code can't say that, that's against the law, okay? So.
So what gives us the authority to charge people for a zoning permit every time they get a CO?
Because it's a different, it's a, I could show it to you in the code. It's not in the proper place in the code. It's a little confusing, which is why we're doing what we're doing. Okay? So. CCO is for construction and safety and those kinds of things. A zoning permit oftentimes and most times has to do with use, change of use, and our code does have a section that says when a property is transferred, basically. That's where we go off the rails a little bit because the statute doesn't, that's not what a zoning permit does.
I'm moving, if I just rent another apartment.
That's change in occupancy. It currently says that. I think it's wrong, that's why we're inviting.
Marianne.
Marianne. And it's in, and I spoke to Frank, which is why he's here tonight, about it because, you know, it's in the wrong section of the code, but, and that was just an error by whoever did it, and he says it's many, many years ago. It's in the site plan area. Well, it's in the site plan area, but it refers to other sections. It says this code, this section of code should be amended to, and it talks about it, it should have been somewhere else, and it wasn't.
Right, I just don't like to do the money grab thing where we charge a fee for either CO or for CCO. And then we also charge a fee for a zoning permit. When any resident that goes upstairs, the construction code goes down, the manager says, "Show me in your ordinance book where I have to pay this for an apartment." We can't really do that. So we either have to correct it, so it does say that, or we have to stop it.
That's the idea, and that, like I said, Frank says it's 30 years, it's been like that, and it's been in the wrong spot for 30 years. And we found it as a result of this issue coming up. And it needs to be straightened out. The fee needs to be straightened out as to what it should, it should be.
So then why is it certain municipalities don't even have a zoning certificate when they issue a CCO?
Because they're probably, they're, my guess is, and I didn't research all the towns, my guess is because it's not either a change of use at the time or, like I said, I think we're, our code has some flaws in it, and when there is a change in occupancy, you should not need a zoning permit, okay? So when somebody comes to buy a one-family house and they come here and you're saying, okay, you need a CCO and you need a zoning permit, I think that's where we fall off.
Yeah, we charge out your money.
Now, the ordinance says it, the ordinance says it, so it allows us to do it. But whether or not that's appropriate and whether or not, you know, our planner is going to recommend that. Listen, I have, I'm ready for the meeting. I think it's next Thursday or Wednesday or Thursday.
All right, so we're on it.
We're continuing on it, and we'll get it right.
Anybody else? Plan its Own Park update. Plan its Own Park is the old, what we consider Number Nine School. It's the municipal park right next to Number Nine School. It's not part of Number Nine School. It's not school district property, it's municipal property. And we've been planning for three years now to redo that park. And we've had money allocated to redo that park for three years now. And where are we with this park?
So we are now ready to go out to bid for the third time.
Since I remember, we were going to see scaled-down plans because the first two times we went out to bid.
We didn't provide the plans because what we did was we kept the plans exactly the same minus the field. So what you have is you have your all-inclusive playground, you have your dog park, you have your half basketball court, and I believe you have two pickleball courts. Basically, that's what we're going out to bid on. So I didn't, we already saw.
So it's grass field instead of a turf field?
We, I'm going to confirm, I'm going to confirm what I'm telling you, but the bid does not have any field at all, which means when we get more money, possibly.
Face to, that's a face to.
We would do it.
So it's just not, just so everybody that's listening knows, it's not just the cost of the turf, it's the underlying infrastructure for drainage that's the most expensive part of this whole project.
Correct.
So why, what does the town use most? I mean, why are we going different? Why don't we, what do we see all of the children using and families using more of? Is it pickleball? Is it basketball? Is it baseball? Is it tennis? And why don't we address those first? Because you don't know when it says two or three's going to come down.
I did, well, I did.
No, I'm just, based on what you just said.
We're doing everything with the field, so.
Right, so my point is.
He's saying, why not do the field first and do the outside?
Does the field more important than everything else?
What is more important to the children?
The field is being played on as we speak, right? Not the best field, okay? It's a dust bowl, but we can go out tomorrow and play on the field. There would not be any limitations of using the field for whether it's softball or soccer, so there's full usage of the field. What we don't have in that area is the playground, which we, it's an all-inclusive playground, which we thought was one of the most priorities. Dog park, as the success that we received. Pickleball, again.
I just didn't know if the code mattered. I'm assuming the way the code comes in.
So we did the numbers that way, and so instead of getting, going for one item, we're going to go for four items.
Do they have any deal with it? Because we do have close to $3 million, but we will eventually have close to $3 million.
Right.
1.5 and, and. So we, we're committed to doing phase two, it's just.
Separating. And then when we have that money in place, we just keep going like. The ideal situation would be.
All community, community benefit giveback money, not taxpayer money at all.
Correct.
What is that, yeah?
The 14th, while everyone is down at the league, Willie will be accepting bids.
All right, last but not least, water notice update. I get a lot of, nobody ever emails me, "Hey, Mayor, the watering bell was great." I never get it. I get, the water's brown. Why do I have no water today? What is this notice? Why is it it's been five years and every couple months Bell's putting a notice out saying that our water quality failed another test? So I know we invited Tom here to give us a quick update on why the notices go out, but then I want to, as I told you and Tom today, I want to also piggyback that about the lead line replacement. I'm not quite sure, I know for a fact, I don't understand what we're doing with it, and I don't, I'm not going to speak for anybody else up here, but I really want to get to the bottom of this lead line thing too.
Sorry, Tom, I'll tee it up and give you the hot stuff. So basically, what you just covered is three topics. There's the brown water.
Yes.
Then there's the level of water for testing and then the lead line replacement.
I've gotten about eight complaints.
So we.
Brown water.
We, let's just deal with brown water. We recently, within the last month, month and a half, hired a company to do the hydrant testing. This was a. Hydrant testing, which requires flushing. Okay. This was a requirement, this, we had to go out and hire this company, it was a requirement from DEP. Part of that process, and there's so many advantages to doing the hydrant testing, but part of the process is that they have to flush. Flush does because it's been sitting there for months and months, it's going to start it. The brown water is going to come out, should last five to 10. In some cases, it's 10 to 20, but the brown water will. Does that mean five to 10 minutes? Five to 10 minutes or 10 to 20 minutes? Should be five to 10. You should be able, when you get brown water, now.
Well, I, I'm okay with that, that we hired. Can we tell people? Now, I do know, I do know we sent out an email here or there, but if we really like put out social media stuff, "Hey, brown water, question mark. This is the reason why. We hired a company to do it. We were forced to hire a company to test the meter, not test the hydrid." Then when we test, we have to, if we just edge, I think people would respect the fact that we're, one, communicating with them, but we're also, we hired a company, we're being proactive, it's maintenance, it's all that great stuff. We can turn a negative into a positive and I don't have to get nasty emails and comments.
I'll help Tom put something together.
Thank you, Tom. Brown water, question mark. Here's the reason why.
Okay, I think that's.
And now, communications is great, and I'm with you. And I guess when they're doing this, this outside agency, they're doing it in sections of Bellville.
Correct.
Okay, so, do we have anything mobile that we can use? Like we do for slowdown, where it can come across the board in that area when people are driving in the neighborhood and say.
Chief has his.
You know what I'm saying? So just a little bit, so when people are in that neighborhood, they can see it.
That product's almost over. We can, it's almost over.
We also get brown water from the street sweepers filling up the streets.
So I tell people all the time, I have a standard response, brown water, there can be a word management.
They have to keep moving, they should move that around, in my opinion. They go to the same hydrant, the same neighborhood gets brown water all the time. That needs to be rotated around town, I believe that.
Well, the manager can definitely make sure that happens. I tell people all the time.
They keep using the hydrant.
Water main leak.
And Bernice, it's not a good hydrant, they keep using it.
Water main leak, brown water, water main repair, brown water, hydrant flushing, brown water. I got all those answers standard, but if we can just help me me out a little bit and actually tell people what we're doing, it would be great. Water notices, I know that's your big thing. Excuse me, guys, I can't, I can't.
Sorry.
Tom?
Okay, so let's talk about the, the latest notice we put out was for water quality parameters, dealt with excursions.
Same notice every time.
Just, you gotta put, okay, so the, what happened is, we purchased, as you all know, we purchased water from NORC. The DEP set a level that the orthophosphate that they use for lead is supposed to be in the water when we receive it. It's .7 milligrams per liter. When, so we test, we take a sample from our interconnections every four times a month. If that water that comes in is less than .7, and I don't know that until maybe a week or two weeks later when I get the results from the lab. So from the day that we took the test, so when we get the result, if the result hopefully is at point, if it's less than .7, so then, if it's two weeks for me to get the results, that's 14 excursions, that's how the DEP does it, okay? Then, so the next week, we take a sample, and that one's fine, but I don't get that result for another two weeks. You have like three weeks of excursions. I hope you understand, it just accumulates. When, we haven't had, we haven't had an excursion since May, in the beginning of the year.
We have noticed up now.
Yeah, but that's, that's because the DEP filing catches up to all that stuff in six months later.
Try to explain this to a resident that's wondering why they, their water rate goes up.
Well, they have to read, if you read inside the notice, it tells you what dates it's from.
So does NORC bear any responsibility? We're the customer, they're the provider, do they bear any responsibility?
Newark had excursions, Bloomfield had excursions.
Do we still pay the same rate for the water when there's an excursion?
Yes.
Why? Is there anything in the contract that says?
No.
Probably would have to be in the contract next to it.
Yeah, who, when is that?
It was a five-year contract, I thought, Steve.
Yeah, I think it was five.
What, the NORC?
I bought 10 years, is it five or 10?
10 years. We can't remember, we can't offset that, is that?
You can always talk to them.
You can always tell them.
It was over, so.
Talking to them is.
So what I've done is I've ordered a handheld orthophosphate tester. So when we take the, I'm waiting for it to come in from pack. When it comes in, when we're taking samples at the interconnections, we'll test it, and if it's less than .7, I'm not going to take a sample.
Throw it out, throw out the sample.
Yeah, so then we'll go back the next day and hopefully it's over .5.
So that's an immediate response, that's an immediate answer?
Yes, yes. Instead of waiting, you know, week, two weeks from the lab.
And just, I mean, I, why is, why is a week delay 14 excursions?[1559.22] What is that?
No, I, I was using, I was just saying it was, this is an example of two-week delays, that's 14 days.
Got it, that's 14.
But it, it could be even more, because the next week you take a sample, and if it takes two weeks to get that, you really have all three weeks till it comes back to points, hopefully comes back to point seven again.
And the brown water and the rusty water has nothing to do with these notices. People, people are the assumption that brown water and rusty water means that they're getting bad water from Belville, and they have all these notices, they're all separations.
Like anything said, we're flushing, we're, we're finishing, we just, just did a, we exercised every valve in town, we exercised every hydrant in town. So now I have an inventory of what's good, what's bad, and we're also flushing, I think, three times a week at night.
Hey, that was my question, we flush at nighttime?
Yes.
Why we flush at nighttime?
Because it's not disturbing people's, people during the day, I don't want to.
People during the day at work, they're, they're at work in their kitchen at school.
Not everyone, schools are open, so we just, it's easy to do it at night.
I know, I know winners who don't do it right now.
So much easier to do it at night, and if, if you doubt what the water looks like when it comes out of these, the flushing, hook up with Jerry in Peralta one night and you'll see what the water comes out, like we wait till it comes out clear. It takes, sometimes it takes 30 minutes to clear a, clear a water.
All right, that's for water notice update, anybody else have any question on that? But then I still need Thomas to round for a few, to talk about the lead line replacement. So, historically, just to paint the big picture, historically, the township's position well before me and everybody probably that sits here, was residential lead lines are the homeowner's responsibility. Maybe 15 years ago, I paid to replace my lead line. We've always told everybody, your responsibility of curb to your house is on you, that's, was always our position. Then the DEP, a couple of years back, said you have to replace 400 lines. We don't care.
Seven percent, yes.
All right, we don't care what your policy, this is the feds now, not the state. The fed said, we don't care what your policy is, you're ordered to replace 7%, which we did the math, it was about 400. We then bonded millions of dollars to do that. I'm assuming the streets that were done, or in the process of being done, were streets that potentially are ready for paving and milling, so we're going to do the underlying infrastructure first and then we pave. I'm assuming that was the, what was the rationale between the streets that you picked?
I, I, the streets that we picked originally, that are doing now, is I, I took the center of town, I took the Geralman Street, where the Geralman Street interconnection is, and then I'm, I'm going to work my way out from there.
You were by the recaps, I believe, you were, so.
Yeah, we were in, you know, Dawson and, you know, that area, now we're in the Union.
Now we're, we are, and was that 400 lines? Was that 400 curved to center of the street? Or was it house?
When we, when we were setting this up, I think I met with you and some other council people, originally I wanted to charge the homeowner for their section in the town, and, and the decision was made, just, we'll pay for everything.
Right, we did, we, we, that was the, I do remember that, we wanted to do that, and then we had the, the order rate increase and we said we can't do that, so.
So.
So we are doing the residential line to the curb, curb to the center of the street.
There's, there's some instances like happened today.
That's where I'm going.
It's, but there, some people have, it's, like, you know, by across the school.
Right, no, that's why I'm asking.
There is a, there's retaining walls and I'm, and I'm trying to be careful and protect the town. When they shoot this thing through, I don't know if we're going to hit foundation, and if, if there's a problem underneath the ground.
What is the order from the feds? We, we have to replace what? The residential line or curb to center of the street?
They want you to replace the whole thing.
The whole thing. So then, I, it's just, how do we, now we bid this out. So I'm assuming, this governing body, we went out to bid, we received bids, you gave us the recommendation, whatever, come away.
Okay.
They knew the streets that we were doing.
Right.
Okay. So, how is it that a, a, a resident of 29 years, who's been paying taxes for 29 years, has three houses to his left, while getting their lead lines replaced, and yet he's sitting there saying, they're literally skipping over me. They're doing three this way, they're doing two this way, I'm getting skipped over.
Because I'm afraid of those, those retaining walls, they're either side of, there's huge retaining walls, that if I get stuck underneath, then I gotta go somehow get on top of his lawn.
I mean, do you understand how a resident would say, I'm paying the same taxes as he is?
I'll give it a shot, but this will take.
Well, who made that policy that we're going to just skip and we're not going to?
I, I made the policy, so we're not getting stuck, I can always go back and revisit them.
Didn't the contractor bid on the streets that he was doing?
Yeah.
Was it just like?
I'm taking, I'm taking the position to protect the.
No, no, and your position is fair, no, it's fair to the township, I'm just not quite sure it's fair to the guy who says, three of my neighbors are getting them replaced and two this way, but they're skipping me.
I don't, I don't know what the top, just like you said, and I, some of these houses.
Are we going to have to eventually replace them all at some point?
Yes.
Okay. So, that same guy.
There's, there's.
There's a couple that's far.
There's a couple of caveats in that, that the people can refuse for you to go into their houses and you can just, as long as you document it, you can buy this.
But, but if we, if you're required, if eventually you're going to be required, and I think Anthony, you and I went to that meeting, remember in New York? With those people? If we're going to eventually, and I remember having the conversation, eventually you're going to have to replace them all, if that guy wants his replaced, it's going to have to be replaced anyway, so why not either do it now, and since you're there, and, you know.
We're, we're already cutting open in front of his house to do the curb to the street, we're just skipping it.
Now, I don't know, is there a way to say, look, we can do this, but, you know, if something happens to you, well, it's going to be your responsibility. You know.
You want to say that?
Well, I, I mean.
I mean, we're the ones going in.
We took a position.
We're the ones shooting, shooting a bullet through.
Now, actually, because I, I was on scene in NORC at one point, and they cut a hole, they dug a hole in the street, I saw it, and the intersection where it connects, and then they go in the house and they cut the line in the house, they cut the line in the street and they hook something up to it, they pull it out.
There's two ways to do it, there's a way, you could, you could pull a new line through.
Right.
And, uh.
We're, we're not doing that.
No, we, in some instances, we've done that, we've done it unfair, and then now we're, now we're using a bullet, so we're going from the curb line, shooting the line into the house.
Well, I can see why that would be difficult to do if there's a.
Sometimes, I, I.
Can we do both?
We, yeah, we could, we could do either or.
Because wouldn't that be easier? I mean, because I don't know where it gets stuck then, if you, if you're cutting, cutting and pulling.
We've, we've had some problems on, on, was it Fairview? I think we had problems where the.
I know there's, there's also houses on Forest that we're skipping too, because they have a wall there.
Listen, I'll, well, I'll go back and look at it and see if we could, if we could pull it through, maybe, maybe that's the solution, not worried about hitting a rock and do something and break, break into.
And you definitely don't want the liability.
Pull through would be easier than shooting, I think.
Sometimes.
In that, in that scenario. If you're just looking up the number.
I heard that, I've heard a story on Fairview, we were pulling it and we, we kept snapping the cable, because whenever the contractor put the lead services in, he put it in like spaghetti. I think they got paid by the linear foot, they put it in, and you pull out, if the house was 20 feet from the curb line, you pull out 100 feet of lead, lead service.
Yeah, remember, the lead is flexible, so it's, they really do go around rocks, it's, it's not like a straight line, I, I've done it. It could go like that, is right.
So, I, I'll, I'll.
I just think it's really not fair to people that are watching their neighbors get their lines, not being skipped.
So I'll, I'll look into it, see if we, maybe we could pull it, some of these retaining walls, if it, if it's feasible.
Does Jerry have a list of who we skipped?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got complaints last, I would say last time, I know Forest Street, because of that hill and.
I think it was more in Graylock, now, was it Forest? Graylock had some, people had 20-foot retaining.
That's Forest.
But then that leads to another question, I, what happens if, when we do go in today or tomorrow or next year to fix those lines or replace those lines and damage is done to the homeowner's property? Where does that number stop? Is it, you know what I'm saying, does it, you know, this is, this is what you have today, and they can't replace it with that, so you have to replace it with this, number goes through the roof, or are they just not satisfied with the work, or something cracks a week later and it comes back to us? So, how does that work for us, or does it work for the town?
I would think insurance, but that's.
Well, the contractor's insurance, the title is insurance.
Okay.
That's one of the things I was afraid of, like if something happens in the front yard, and you've got these walls, you gotta go in and start digging.
And then, and then what happens, how long after can they come back? That's, so is all this stuff, as we, as we've learned this, are we documenting, is there anything down to where we don't have to come and revisit it?
There's some homes that we had to go back into, yes.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying from an issue standpoint, so we, we're bringing up all good concerns, I mean skipping, a week later, something breaking, a month later, something breaking, is there anything that we can document? So the homeowner is aware of it to say, hey, yeah, we're doing this, we're going, we're fixing it, it's part of us, great, but if something happens in a week or two weeks, we're not responsible.
No, we, we'll go back.
No matter how long?
No, as long as the contractor's still on the job.
Okay, so my point is, is that documented, do the homeowners know?
But then, but then the daddy has a maintenance bond for, I think it's a one year.
Communicate, there's nothing, yeah, okay, that's my point, okay.
All right, anybody else?
I'll, I'll look at some more to the, to, to, hopefully take care of those houses.
Yeah, I, I don't want to bring up the CCO issue or the zoning certificate issue, but we do all kinds of testing for COs and stuff, lead paint and lead paint disclosure and all that, telling somebody who's buying a house, whether or not they have a lead line or not, would be something that would be very valuable, it's just, it's not done anywhere, which is great.
Actually, someone just, oh, perhaps to see if they had a lead line, the house was built in 1920, so I said, I think you have.
Probably good. Okay, thank you, Tom.
And that information's available to Kevin, Kevin's office, the assessor's office, because he.
Ages, by the way, it's not a definitive.
No, no, someone.
1950, 1925.
We don't have any documents that say, oh, yes, you.
No, I, I always made this assumption, 1950 was the correct.
Unless you did a survey, which.
Yeah, let somebody change it, too.
It's hard to get people's house.
We should do an NCO, we send an inspector in there to, we should log whether it's a lead line or not.
Okay, that's the plan to do it, we just do an inspection.
Thank you, Tom.
You got anything else?
Nope, that's it. Next on the agenda, report manager.
So my report's going to be a little different, I realize that the mayor and council enjoyed my slideshow about the summer camp, because you enjoyed that, that, that side presentation, I figured I'd do it again. This time I'm going to do this one without music, I promise, I'll only spend a couple of seconds on each slide, but I think it's important. We have a redevelopment meeting, and we do cover a lot of this stuff, but it's very, very difficult for everyone to pass by all of these projects on a week-to-week basis, so you, some of this might be a pleasant surprise on, based on the progress that's happening around town. So, Mr. Jeff, are we ready? Let's see. So just again, real quick, let's see, that's slide one, let's see slide two. All right, so the Dutch Reformed Church is, what you see there is the steeple. The reason why I took that picture is because it was, it's one of the first things that you see when you come into a Belville from Bergen, Hudson County, and that steeple was in greatest repair, so we were very lucky, the Dutch, Dutch church repaired it, it actually is very, very pretty, big difference. Next slide. So next slide, which is slide 3, explore, is the 187, 187 Main Street, this is 18 units, that also comes with some retail on the bottom. So you'll see slide three and also slide four, again, that's, that's American-built. Slide five, quick check is happening, we've talked about it, we've heard about it, and a lot of progress is being made. Keep in mind, this quick, quick check is opening, and the one on Washington Avenue will be closing for a, a little medicenter. Slide six is the 116 luxury loft performance on Terry Street, yes, there were some delays, but progress is being made now, we're back on track. This project is, is expected to be done early second quarter of 2024. Take a look at slide seven, that's the old Walgreens, right? This went under tremendous infrastructure and obviously it looks great. If you take a look at the next slide, which was the parking lot, again, that was a nice one, now you have a beautiful retaining wall, going back to seven, yeah, you got a retaining wall, which, really nice landscaping. Slide nine, slide nine is happening, this is across the street, this is the Vamell Project, 268 units, okay, this is, this is a public plaza there. This is slide nine, 10, 11, 12, you'll see the progress being made on these 268. It's tough when you're driving down the street to look over, but if you go into the cabinet guy's window in his office and you look out the window, you get that, a really good view of that, that's nine, 10, 11, 12. 13, 13, I threw division, this homeowner division, because this has been a high saw for that neighborhood, and I, I received some very nice compliments that property value, that they're finally, construction is being done on that. So again, it's going to add value to the neighborhood. Slide 14 is right here on Washington Avenue, the 168 units, 10,000 square feet of retail space. And again, there was some issues with some dark orders because of COVID and things of that nature. This project is, is expected to open by the end of 2020, three, or the first quarter of 2024. Slide 16 shows you the new streetscaping plan, that this goes all the way downtown from Union Avenue, Washington Avenue, Franklin Street. These are our sidewalks, those are the pictures of our actual sidewalks, again, this is a total upgrade. Take a look at slide 17, that's the 114 units down at 740 Washington Avenue, again, you took a decrepit lot, so to speak, and we have 114 units coming up, and there is some small retail there as well. This is expected to be done in 16 to 18 months. Slide 19 is 527 Union Avenue, if you passed by there recently, you'll see, this project is about 99% complete. There's eight, 20 units and 800 square feet of, of commercial, which is good. And then my, the last is a project that I'm very happy to be part of, we have so many compliments on the way the stadium looks with the new blue and yellow football stripes, someday I might not be here and you're going to drive by mayor and say, the manager had a great idea on that. That's my manager's report.
Questions for the manager?
Update and progress, every one of you should be very proud of all the progress that's been made in Belville. My hat's off to the mayor and council.
Anybody questions, concerns? Nope?
I can see it now.
We're about 10 grand, you could, you could actually sponsor the.
Billboard.
Uh, now, the scoreboard, I mean.
There you go.
What about that?
10 grand?
Yeah. Uh, next item on our agenda is the report of the mayor, so, question first, I know we canceled DMV, two weeks ago, Anthony, we canceled DMV, when people were scheduled to be here on that and, and got their slots and registered and all that. Do we have a new date for DMV and are you going to stop people from suddenly making nasty emails about that?
Yeah, so I mean, that was a little bit of a scope, so again, there's, there's so many days to be able to do besides Tuesday and Thursday, and if they have to do it on the Tuesday and Thursday, I think it was your idea to use a little league of property, because people can still drive in there and park, so we are waiting for a callback for a new date, so we will get a new date as soon as we can.
Uh, past events, so this past Thursday, September 28th, the police department did their community safety talk, very well received, I saw some great photos on that. Also, as you now know, we had to cancel our October 7th food truck festival, and I spent an entire week online telling people there was absolutely no rain date, there was no rain date, no rain date, no rain date, and I even told Council of Graziano, there's no rain date, and lo and behold, a, a rain date has emerged, so that will be part of the upcoming events in the next section. Also, this past Sunday, we had our Italian flag raising here in the morning, very well received, probably our biggest crowd, at least since I've been doing this for the last five years, and that was followed by the last remaining Columbus Day parade in Essex County at 1:30, and I have to say, for those of you who marched in that, there were a lot of people on Drama Street and Franklin Avenue, more, more than I remember, actually, very, very well received by our community. Upcoming events, as I just mentioned, this coming Friday is a rescheduled date for the food truck festival. It's going to be from 4 to 10, I'm told all 15 trucks are still committed, and basically, everything that we had advertised is going to happen, is going to be happening this coming Friday, that's going to be at our third location, we've changed location again, it's at the municipal stadium, at the Ayakono Municipal Stadium complex.
Oh, easy.
At the municipal stadium there, if the weather holds, we're going to be on the grass, baseball field, the weather does not hold for us, we will be on what would be the old, Tommy remembers playing on those tennis courts in the, in the field there, probably. That's where it's going to be. Also Saturday, I learned this today, actually, just, the fire department just announced the fire safety event, I saw that pop up today. It is going to be Saturday, October 14th, from 2 to 4, not to be confused with the townwide garage sales, that'll be happening on Saturday and Sunday, that list has now been advertised in alphabetical order.
Thank you.
By numerical order and alphabetical order, actually.
See, it didn't, it didn't cause any, any, any.
We made that change last year, because three years ago, they were numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, and then there was a number of 214, it was very, very confusing, so.
It was confusing, so yes, whoever is brilliant.
It was my idea to do it, I don't want to take the credit for it, but.
Oh, I wasn't going to give you the credit.
I didn't think you were going to, at all.
Don't worry about it.
So it is now numerical, it's going to be Saturday and Sunday. Tuesday, the 17th, a women's self-defense class, and once again, hosted by our police department. Saturday, October 28th, is our Halloween event, every single thing you always remember about our great Halloween events is staying the same, with the exception of Jake the Snake, unfortunately will not be here, but we have replaced Jack the, Jake the Snake with a pet costume contest, though, chief, if you still have a cat, you can still have a cat, chief. You could dress that cat up and bring him out to our event, and maybe you'll bring, you'll win a, still have the cat? It is from 11 to 2 at the High School Great Lawn, it's the minor lawn, the high school lawn, it's going to be there. Veterans Day weekend is approaching, we're going to do both things the same day, it's going to be the 5K race at 9 o'clock in the morning on Sunday, November 12th, it's also going to be our parade that starts at 12 noon, that's going to be November 12th, Sunday. Both things are happening the same day. News, Belville Police Department is doing reading for pizza challenge, information's on their social media, and the hockey program in Belville is going really well, we had two New Jersey Devils on scene with us, we had about 30 participants last time. Okay, that's about it for my report of the mayor, next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Need a motion for the meeting of September 26th, 2023?
Do you want to move them both?
We can move them both, and the special, as long as everybody was there, and the special meeting of October 2nd, 2023. We're moving them both. I think you have a motion, I think you had a second. Or call their own, yeah.
Senator Casarelli, yes, DePena?
Yes.
Razziano?
Yes.
Maltari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stumble Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next on the agenda is communications.
The Historic Preservation Commission is pleased to recommend the designation of the following township-owned properties with the support of the mayor and municipal council, and, if you may, you want to.
Want me to read the list? I'm ready. Insight. Yeah, so, in our last meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, we would like to recommend that the following properties be designated historic, not only for our own value in town, but also for possible future grants, it becomes eligible for, and also these buildings are historic, so I think the designation is appropriate. So town hall?
Hey, okay.
Town hall, library, the fire station on Washington Avenue, and the fire station on.
That's a typo.
Uh, that's a typo right there, that should be Franklin Street, not Avenue.
I was going to say, what's the story?
No, the one on Franklin Avenue is, is too new to be, yeah. But, that's it, so if, if the council decides to move forward, it would be a voluntary process, where the council would voluntarily fill out a, a little form. If not, it would be an involuntary, which, we get into that maybe later, but we're looking for a voluntary, which means the council would agree with the designations. And that, it's a very simple form, I don't know if the manager or the mayor would be the one to actually fill it out, or maybe the township attorney, but one of you three, if the council decides to, to do it, I think it would just be a simple resolution.
I was just going to say, we put a resolution on next time.
Yeah, yeah, if everyone.
I don't think there's gonna be an argument.
Yeah.
All right, so maybe for the next. Put a resolution for the next meeting and then get the forms.
Okay, thank you.
All right, be.
The Clark's Office is advertising for the twenty twenty-four annual professional contracts on Thursday, October twelve, and the return date is October twenty-sixth. Both have, for the RFPs and RFQs, you have resolution two five two and resolution two fifty-three with all the individual areas of professionals. And we're trying to keep it and we'll keep it as a calendar year. Brian Roth is requesting to have their annual blood party at twenty. You would have, you would have on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from twelve to eight. And Michael's Roscommon House is planning on having their annual five K breast cancer awareness walk on Saturday, October twenty-first, and is requesting assistance from the police department during their walk.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is ordinance. We have ordinances, ordinance thirty-six twenty-three for possible adoption. An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinance of the township of Bevel, chapter eight dash two point nine, parking limited on certain streets. And it is Ralph Street. Section one, in that section, eight dash two point three, schedule two, of the entire ordinance is hereby amended by adding the following location. That would be Ralph Street, the east side, from eight to four on school days. I need a motion to open the public comment.
So moved.
A motion made in second to open to public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromler Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have a question about this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, seeing none. Do we have, am I unmuted? Can they hear me?
You got unmuted.
No.
My unmuted are unmuted. Now, you have a mute.
Now, is that, oh, we're unmuted.
So that's unmuted.
Okay, if anybody on the phone that has a question or a comment about ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-three? Do we have anybody on the phone?
David there?
Okay.
Oh, okay, all right. Right now on this ordinance, no one wants to speak on the thirty-seven dash twenty-three.
Okay, need a motion to close public commenting and move to final adoption.
Motion to move.
Motion made in second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromler Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted?
Ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-three, ordinance for possible adoption. Ordinance amending chapter twelve, the township code, building and housing. Section twelve dash sixteen point four entitled fee. Need a motion to open public commenting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to open public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromler Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Anybody for a question about this ordinance and this ordinance only? Anybody on the phone for a question about this ordinance and this ordinance only? I want to make a motion to close public commenting and move to final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to close public commenting and move to final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromler Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted?
Ordinance forty dash twenty-three, ordinance for introduction, adoption of the flood plan management regulations of the township of Bevel. An ordinance by the council of Bevel Township, amending the Bevel Township Code of ordinances to repeal chapter twenty-two, sections twenty-two dash one through twenty-two dash five, to adopt a new chapter twenty-three, sections one.
New chapter twenty-two.
New chapter twenty-two, sections one oh one through one thousand and one, okay? And adopt a flood hazard maps to designate a flood plan administrator and providing for the severability, severability and ineffective dates. Need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to introduce. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromler Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance introduced?
Ordinance forty-one dash twenty-three, ordinance for introduction. An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the township of Bevel, New Jersey, chapter eight dash sixteen entitled handicap parking spaces. Need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to introduce. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromler Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The ordinance is introduced?
Okay, next item on our agenda is public commenting. I need a motion to open public commenting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromler Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
All right, everyone, we're now open for public commenting. Just raise your hand. I'll call on you. Come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak on what we all hope is township business. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Anthony Macosia, nine-four, Nolan Street. In regards to the garage sale this weekend, there's a very big northeastern storm coming, starting late Friday night. Is there any possible way we can cancel it and reschedule?
We'll decide.
It's gonna be a dangerous storm. It's gonna start.
We'll decide the day before. We're not gonna cancel it the days before. We'll just.
So it's, it's in.
Every event we do has the potential of rain, though. We can't.
The only reason I'm saying is I know you posted, no. No rain date, and then I noticed there's a big storm coming.
Maybe Saturday is the wash-up, or we get Saturday. I mean, on Sunday, the manager's all.
It's Saturday and Sunday. It's a different hit.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for public commenting? Yes, Matt.
Good evening, criminal flight three thirty-three, Main Street. In all seriousness, thank you for putting them in alphabetical order, the street addresses. Like I said, see what I, look what I need you do.
We did it last year. They didn't ask for it last year, so.
Well, no, it wasn't alphabetical order last year.
It was.
We're not gonna argue about that one.
We went out to argue. We could bet. Instead of arguing, we could bet. What would you like to bet?
I was gonna say, you can't afford my bets.
I probably can't.
You can't afford my bets, my friend. Last meeting, I handed you, excuse me, I handed the manager the emails that we were communicating about the lights on Drolman, Union.
So yes, I did receive that. I got all the information.
Right.
The next day, I made a call down to the county. My bad that I did not follow up because I had not heard back and it's been two weeks. So I will follow up tomorrow and I will shoot you an email tomorrow.
You were in the Drolman?
Is it, is it, I'm sorry, where is it? Is it in the Drolman?
It's Union Drolman.
Yeah.
So Camilla received an email from the county. She shared with me.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The email that Camilla shared with me was, hey, Camilla, basically, if the town wants the light, we'll consider it, meaning that we would have to take the initiative. I put a call into that person just to see, I've never heard of that before, and I'm sure. So just to see what I could bring back to the council. I did place that call, but I didn't do the follow-up on it, but I will tomorrow.
Never mind. And also, again, we're gonna have to continue on with the cleaning of Main Street. Because, no, no, it's getting better on the one end, like near us and things like that. But they're kind of forgetting that Main Street goes all the way down the road. And where they're starting to build the storage unit and things like that, there's a lot of garbage noticing there. I'm gonna email my friend, Meredith? Okay. And then tell her to continue with the cleaning. They're still not cleaning it up the way I like it, but I digress. So we're gonna continue on with that. And now, all the little slideshow, nice slideshow, by the way. Thank you. It is encouraging to see all of the development that is going on. It's a wonderful thing. Everyone's trying to make the town better, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing. I'm just fearful that all these places that are popping up with all these hundred units here, two hundred units here, three hundred units here, that it's just gonna give too much pressure on the infrastructure, the roads, the, I mean, we already have enough problems with our roads now with PSCG ripping them up left and right. So hopefully, with all this is being, what is being built, hopefully, it, everyone has a better plan to protect the infrastructure, just not the streets themselves, but the police department, the fire department, the schools. I hope everybody's working together for truly, which we all hope that, you know, we all want what's best for Bevel. And with the stadium seats, I don't think it's necessary to hire an engineer because I, I mean, I'm older than dirt, I admit it. And I graduated a couple of years ago from Bevel. That's what I'm saying. Those stadium seats should have all been grandfathered in, that you don't have to go out and spend more money on an engineer. All of that should have just been able to be done with any changes to the existing structure. You're, you're, you're basically talking about the steps and the bleachers and things like that. All of those, that should have been all grandfathered in. You don't need to, you don't think you, I could be totally wrong. I don't think you need to hire an engineer to say, okay, we need to do X, Y, Z to make it APA compliant. It wasn't, that stuff's, like I said, I'm out of high school a couple of years, you know? So look into, before you hire the engineer, to see what you guys can do without getting anything, you know, reorganized that way. And again, with the color, painted gold. The school colors are blue and gold. Just throw some gold on the steps. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Yeah, Vincent Francantoni, one twenty-nine, Mount Prospect. First, I'd like to compliment, because finally, this historic preservation is getting to work. And the, one thing I'd like to add, the Bevel reservoir should be on there. It was designated, I don't know if you, we turned over all the documents when I was on the board. I don't know if you've got them, but Essex County did that survey in the early eighties. The reservoir is on there.
Oh, okay, I'll check it out.
So hopefully, we can save that. Also, Mr. Mayor, you weren't here the last meeting, but I brought the pictures to the meeting. Of, this is, June sixteen, nineteen twenty-fourteen, right here in this room, they held a public hearing, the State of New Jersey. And this is what they were gonna do to Washington Avenue. And they handed all these maps out. And now we heard that, so Mr. Iaccone, when I showed him the pictures, because you had told me that wasn't the case, but here are the pictures that they handed out.
Nine years ago. Nine, nine years, that was the plan nine years ago, Mr. Francantoni.
Twenty-fourteen, right.
That was the plan.
So Mr. Iaccone said you were gonna check with the state and see what we're doing.
But we had a public hearing here, since I've been mayor, probably three or four years ago, in the same room. Just like that was nine years ago, we had one three years ago, where the state presented maps and plans and everything that. And I did hear your comments last week and disagreed with them when you said that we weren't getting any sidewalk work done and there was no landscaping done. That's totally not true. We are getting bump outs. We're getting rain.
Catcher garden. Rain garden in front of town hall.
Right, so there is some landscaping. There are bump outs in the plan, Mr. Francantoni.
That's not what you told me, because you said the streets kept being done by Bevel, not the state.
They're not, no, they're doing the street. They're doing the street.
And now, but now you're saying they're also doing the bump outs and all?
They are absolutely doing bump outs.
And some landscaping?
Yes.
Well, is it what they proposed?
No, nine years ago, no. We didn't have bike lanes on that. We didn't have all kinds of things now that the feds require. That's nine years ago. It was almost a decade ago.
They changed the engineers. They changed a lot.
Well, I don't recall when it was changed. You know, we just keep changing these things.
We don't do anything, Mr. Francantoni. That would be the feds and that would be Trent.
No, you do do something. You and previous councils and the council manager form of government, there seemed to be no continuity or everything. They did a streetscape program. They started it with papers. All of a sudden, they changed it and they created a new streetscape program, which is in front of your town hall. And, and that was gonna be that way. And then he contracted, no wonder renovated his store, and he had to comply with it. And then that thing fell by the wayside. We don't continue everything. Then we get a new streetscape program. Now you're doing what you just did. He showed them the pictures with gray blocks. So we don't complete anything. We keep watching there, oh, we got a streetscape program. You're starting, you do two or three blocks, and nothing happens. Then all of a sudden, a new streetscape program. And people renovate their place. What do they do? So now we got a mixture of every kind of streetscape program. It's, it's crazy. You know, this afternoon, somebody sent me a brief clip of you were on some radio show or some show, you were being interviewed, Mr. Mayor, and he said, we're a small town. And they always show me the clips. I don't know the context. We're a small town and we want to keep it that way. Don't look like you want to keep it that way, but all these high-rise, multifamily homes we're building all over town, which is adding to congestion. And when we're talking about this flood, and I don't know what you're gonna do, the flood hazard maps, you're gonna increase the flood hazard areas because all these buildings are paving over every square inch of the property you got in there.
I do need you to wrap up, Mr. Francantoni.
Yeah, well, the one, the hundred and fifty-eight units over there, when they presented the plan, they got this big plan. All them properties, they knocked down. And up on the map was a little bit of green. I asked the architect or the engineer, I says, well, how much is that? So she scaled it off, oh, about ten, twelve inches. So all them properties there, which had backyards, which used to absorb water, now it's, and the engineer says, oh, we're putting a new pipe. I said, where's it go? It goes to Washington. Then where's it go? But then it goes right down Washington Avenue and down into the river. So we're.
Thank you, Mr. Francantoni.
Now, the final thing.
No, sir, you're out of time.
There's one more thing is, you told me when I said that, the lawsuit you filed against the town, the judge called it a frivolous lawsuit, and you vehemently said, that's not what he said. Here's a printout from the lawsuit. And it simply said, plaintiff's public statement.
From the lawsuit, the judge didn't say it was the right thing, John.
Plaintiff's claims were entirely frivolous and violate rule eleven B and all those. But also showed this was something more, an improper.
Mr. Francantoni, you're wrong again, Mr. Francantoni.
Mr. Francantoni, what you're reading from is someone else's brief. It's not from the judge. I can see it.
This is a transcript of the case.
No, it's not. No, it's not, Mr. Francantoni.
You're out of time anyway, Mr. Francantoni.
It's not. That's some legal document, a legal argument. That's a legal argument that was filed in court by one of the attorneys who was trying to get the judge to say it was frivolous.
You're wrong again, Mr. Francantoni. And you're also out of time. Anybody else for public comment?
The judge said.
That's not, Mr. Francantoni, okay? Yes.
Mayor of Charles ninety-five Bell Street. I'll be pretty fast to seeing you at three meetings. I'm sure you missed me. A question, because I wasn't here on one of the meetings. I just wanted to ask a simple question. What makes you qualified to be OEM director or co-director, or whatever you want to call it? Do you have the qualification for that? And what I don't understand is how a town employee could appoint them. So, so what I'm asking you, so you are in the, in that position properly? Yes or no? Okay, that's all I want to know. Going back to resolution number C, is that the gas station on corner of Graylock Parkway in Washington? Mr. Iaccone shaking his head. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, that's going to be another designation of area redevelopment?
I think it's already long, long been that.
And I remember, but what I'm saying is, look, they want to, you know, the, the problem, what I object to this, with my own objection to this, it's not the building, it's the zoning that they're getting, area redevelopment, when we have, we, the town is already designated an area rehabilitation, because the problem is, under your, or problem, uh, private, whatever you wanna call it, they do not pay into the school system, that is the biggest problem, that's gonna come and bite us maybe ten years down the road. If you want, if they want the twenty-five-year tax abatement, which they all seem to be getting, and I call it spot zoning, then if any children utilize our school system, they should pay for it, I think that would be fair. Don't you think so? I got time, got three minutes left. I'll wait for an answer, because I don't have much to ask you today.
Well, it is public comment, so you don't really get answers to comments, or related comments.
But you can only answer me, of all people.
I'd hate to interrupt you, because then you complain I interrupt you.
I know, but you're right, we go back.
I'll let you talk for another three more minutes.
So that's, that's my complaint, that why do they have to continuously get twenty-five year tax payment, when they can get a six-year tax abatement with a zero, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty others? And at least they pay into the school systems. And, and how is that going to help everybody's taxes, when your so-called millennials utilize these things, and then everybody, then, then you're gonna have, uh, like here, just around a block from me, we have an apartment, six people living in it, and you think four or five people aren't gonna live in these apartments?
Construction officials, right here. I could have told them about that.
Complaint was made, and it's already been addressed, and they've been removed, I'm just using that as an example. That was very, uh, done very quickly, but if, if people are using basement apartments, six people in the basement, don't you think all these small apartments, people are gonna be living in them illegally? Yes, and not paying into the school system.
Anybody else for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street. I noticed that, uh, little street is about to be paved for the second time this year. I had brought to the council's attention, and a couple of months ago, that the first paving seemed to be substandard, there were numerous undulations in the road, which actually became a safety hazard, so assuming that the street is going to be repaved, since most of their equipment is parked in front of my house at this moment, um, who's paying for that? Is the original contractor responsible for repaving, or are we being now doubly charged for the little street? I'd like an answer to that question. At recent planning board meeting, uh, and yet another Silver Lake Residential Zone project was approved. Silver Lake Residential, I'm sure you're all aware, but in case anyone needs to be reminded, in July of two thousand nineteen, you changed zoning, so that in the Silver Lake region, you could build multifamily houses on very narrow lots that are only twenty-five feet wide. In just the last few months, the planning board has approved two SLR projects, one on Lake Street, a single-family home now is being replaced by four two-family units, a total of twenty-four bedrooms, on lots that are now being subdivided only twenty-five feet wide. The applicant only had to provide eight parking spots for twenty-four bedrooms. And at the last planning board meeting on Heckel Street, another SLR project, two, two-family houses, twelve bedrooms, only four parking spots. What I asked at the last planning board meeting is that, since you have been allowing such structures to be built now for four years, don't you think it would be wise, in everyone's collective interest, to do a study at this point? You have a statistically significant number of SLR projects, see how many parking, how, how many cars are associated with these projects? When you came up with this SLR thing, you assumed that, uh, the Silver Lake would become a transit village, and that very few people would own cars, and on the basis, you only require one parking spot per unit, not per bedroom, which is the rule generally throughout the rest of the township. So I think it would be wise at this point to see if your planning is consistent with reality, to do a study. How many parking, how many cars are actually being generated by each of these SLR projects? I hope, uh, the council would agree with me. During Mr. Iacona's slide presentation, he showed the nearly completed project of one, uh, seventy-eight one oh two Washington Avenue, the former De Popolo private lot, which is now, uh, a hundred and fifty-eight residential units. I've heard through the grapevines that there may be a utility problem preventing that building from opening. From what I've been told, is that there's no gas service in the building, it's all electric. And apparently, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or if you have, you wanna provide any updates, apparently, they don't have the proper electrical service in place to provide electricity in the form of not only lights, but heat and everything else in the building, so that now, uh, apparently some sort of sub-generation station is now has to be separately built in order to power this monster building. I hope, you know, with you guys, similar projects going on, especially on the northern part of Washington Avenue, that if, if the engineers are making mistakes in the utility situation, that you make sure that everything is double-checked, so you don't run into additional problems like this. So, a minute left. During Mr. Iacona's project, you spoke about other projects that are nearly coming to fruition now, but I noticed that there was no mention of the Soho project, right? Mr. Mellon, in February, in January of two thousand nineteen, on your Facebook, I remember, you were given a private tour of the building, you said in your Facebook posting, you have lots of pictures, that the project was nearing completion, and that you expected occupancy begin that summer. This was two thousand nineteen. Here we are, four and a half, almost five years later, the building is dark. I understand that the, the construction is finished, but there isn't anyone living in the building. I'd like to know, if that was possible, what's going on? I've got three seconds left. And lastly, um, with the water line replacement, for those of us who took it upon ourselves to replace our lead lines with copper, will we, we be getting any credit? We're not costing.
I'm one of those people, by the way.
Good, well, we have a shared interest in this case, but it would be nice, I mean, I know, I would even appreciate a five-dollar credit, or just something to say thank you for saving the township. According to Mr. SPO's records, my house, which was built in nineteen fifteen, has a lead service line, but it, it, the lead line was pulled out in, in nineteen eighty, so I offered previously to send you pictures, so Mr. Harris' rule, that anything before nineteen fifty has, has lead, anything after doesn't, doesn't work out, I think you even mentioned that much.
Thank you, sorry. Can you just answer about the paving on Little Street, please?
I'm, I'm gonna confirm that, we don't, we wouldn't double, we wouldn't double pay, I'm sure of that, but I'll confirm.
Was that contractor found with two, two, happened on an inferior?
I gotta just get an update from Tom, but I'll shoot you an email.
All right, I hope, I'm glad at least it's being fixed, because it was a, a potential public safety hazard, the way it was badly paved.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody on the phone for public comment?
Anybody on the phone?
Phone.
Phone.
Hi, good evening, Mary.
Yes.
Hi, Nellie, I'm Floyd Rossner, Bellevle.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Great, thank you. Um, I just wanted to address the parking. I mean, there's numerous things that I wanna address, but I don't think I have the time. So a lot of people there discuss, obviously, we know all these developments that are, um, opening up soon. We have over eleven-hundred unit apartments opening up in the next six months to year. How do we address parking? Parking is a concern now, is there an ordinance for parking? And my understanding is that there isn't a parking permit ordinance for some areas, but not for others. So that's one of the things that I wanted to talk about. Right, if, if there is an ordinance, obviously, I think that's something that we should consider throughout the town. Obviously, there's gonna be much more demand, as everyone mentioned, in our township.
So.
These apartments are bringing in.
Nellie, Nellie, I, I might be able, just to answer you quickly, uh, by far, the new developments that are all either up or going up, all have parking requirements attached to them, and, uh, our, our neighborhoods that are existing neighborhoods, like where you live, or where I might live, uh, there are parking regulations there, but we don't limit in existing households, how many parking car, how many parked cars. You, you might have five cars in a, in a two-bedroom house, uh, we don't limit that for residential neighborhoods, but for.
Well, we shouldn't, and that's not what I want. So we're not, we shouldn't limit the amount of rides, that is true, like in my household, we have three vehicles. Uh, my neighbors, their family of four, five, and they have four. What I'm saying is that, these developments now that are coming in, they're gonna, like you just mentioned, they have parking, but they're gonna have visitors, they're gonna have other people, they're gonna.
We have all that accounted, we, we do have that accounted for.
Okay, my, my fear is that, uh, like I see it now, um, so permit parking for me is like, and Anthony, your dad, being, um, a mayor, we often, what he adopted was having exactly that permit parking for people that are not living conscious, that, um, that were not allowed to park there, I'm just saying that. Um, I, I, where I'm seeing in my, on my street, when I first moved, moved there a couple of years ago, there were a, an enormous amount of parking spots, you can find, you can actually park in front of your house. Now, what I'm finding is that people are either leaving the park for days, and just, I'm not sure, like, you know, if they're a resident here. By the time that I called, the person wasn't a resident, I saw.
But they're allowed to, I mean, but you have seven cars between your house and your next-door neighbor, you just, you don't want anybody else to park there.
We have, we have, we have a driveway, and that's not the point, the point is that there are people coming into town, or people, I'm not sure, that permit parking would address having these basement illegal, um, you know, residency that we're seeing, that people are talking about, that we're witnessing, like that would address so many issues that our township has right now.
So, yeah, I, I've already addressed that, though, Nellie, the brand-new stuff, when you say people coming into Bellevle, the brand-new stuff, everything that gets built has to have parking attached to it, whether it's by unit, or whether it's by bedroom type, and we even have a percentage where the developer has to, has to have visitor parking as well.
So what's that percentage?
It depends on the size of the unit, it could be fifteen percent, though, so fifteen extra spots per, per one hundred parking spots. And it's not by, it's not by apartment, it's also by bedroom size a lot of times.
So, my understanding is that if there is, okay, so a unit that, uh, can accommodate two bedrooms.
At least two parking spots, depending on the neighborhood.
Right, but they will have visitors.
And we have fifteen percent of that available overall for visitors.
And, and the remaining of it? What, what happened for those that don't, that come in? I mean, I get people from different restaurants that are staying, open a little later, and are, and are parking in this area. There's just, so I think that happens, do you have a permit parking area? Is the township have?
We do have permit parking, uh, we do have very specific permit parking for streets that border towns that have permit parking.
Okay, so I think that there should be a coordinate for permit parking, that would help the township figure out who is, um, living in that home, if there is additional, you know, like people that are living in basements or addicts, and that'll just give them an idea of whose cars, I mean, I'm, this is not a, a, a big town, I mean, they have an idea of, you know, when they're patrolling, who lives here, who doesn't, if this is a vehicle, and even our neighbors, we're gonna get a gauge of what vehicles don't belong and what vehicles do. So I think that would give, um.
Unfortunately, I.
And the LCPD, an idea of what's happening in our township, and kind of gauge of, you know, what, what is happening in the actual home.
Understood, and I, I, I hear your points, you make some, some good points, I do need you to wrap up, because your time is nearly expired.
Okay, so with government, government, you have an app that you mentioned, and that was something that was, I think you highlighted, you were excited about the GUP alert. I don't know how often that's been used. I put in some, you know, comments in there, and some red flags for, you know.
I think you referred to GUP pilot, you said about GUP pilot.
GUP pilot, right, GUP pilot, yeah.
That's exactly, yeah. So sometimes it's not responded here. The, the one specific one that I, when I address is, when you're, with, just, different things that I go and put, um.
So, Nellie, I, I, and, Nellie, I hate to cut you off, but can you just maybe email the manager tomorrow, and he can track that, I do have to move on. Uh, if you email the manager, email Vinnie, he'll send it to the manager, he'll track that all down for you.
Okay, I really wanna put, um, emphasis on the permit parking, I think that would help overall the township have a feel of what's happening, who's living in town, who doesn't belong there, which, which apartments are being rented illegally, and, um, I, I just, I can visually see Washington Avenue and all of our streets even being more overwhelmed once these parks, once these buildings go up, um.
Okay, I, I do, and, Nellie, I do have to cut you off, though, we're, we're well past our time here. Thank you so much.
Anybody else on?
Anybody else on, on the line? Hearing none. You, uh, I will entertain a motion to close public comment. Motion made in second to close public comment, declare call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Montari?
Yes.
Strovell?
Yes.
Stumble Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Millheim?
Yes, consent agenda.
Will you just pull a bunch? D, C, and I?
What do we have?
I think it's D, C, and I.
Uh, I, uh, E is one of them.
Yeah, D, D, E, and I, D, E, and I.
D, E, and I, please.
Yeah.
That's it, for me?
Yep. Yeah.
There's nothing else, I'll, I'll say, move against the agenda with the exception of D, E, and I.
So moved, second.
Motion made in second to move, move against the agenda with the exception of D, E, and I, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Montari?
Yes.
Strovell?
Yes.
Stumble Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Millheim?
Yes. Okay, I need a motion to move, uh, E, D, and I together, please.
Motion.
Motion made in second, clerk call roll, move E, D, and I together.
D, C, E, and I, well seen.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Montari?
Yes.
Strovell?
Yes.
Stumble Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Millheim?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm staying.
Scratched up from the.
New business. Hearing none, seeing none.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna, um, give my condolences to the Longo family, Nancy Longo Rudolph, who was a, um, nurse here for several years, passed away a couple of weeks ago, and my condolences and thoughts with the family, I know the councilman, Revell, and myself, did go to the memorial service on, um.
So, for those of you that don't know, Nancy was a nurse in town, and we, we've had a hidden gym, which I call our, our visiting nurses, and she was one of them, and served us for many, many years, and, uh, we just wanted to recognize her and pass on our condolences